Podcasting this evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I want to apologize for the coming out this Friday to see if we can troubleshoot the problem. So again, I apologize for any inconvenience that's causing for tonight.
What gives for our public record then?
Technology at its finest. There's something about the old way which is kind of nice.
We are posting on the, on Channel 3 as well as the website that we are having sound issues. At least the public will be aware that there are issues going on currently.
So if we got a bunch of people running up to City Hall soon, we'll know they got the message. Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you for the terrible news. Well, we have someone from Edison here, so maybe we can do that presentation?
It's not a presentation, but it's just an update on the water stuff. And she was going to give it together with Bob Greenlaw because they've been working in tandem together.
Okay, Bob Greenlaw. Good evening, Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. And with me is
Tara Prabhu, Southern California Edison.
So we'd like to provide kind of a joint update on the SCE project. First, I'd like to add a little bit about construction downtown since I went through this myself for the city's capital project with 22 valves. The waterfront. And I wanted to share with you just last week, as far as their schedule goes, what the restrictions are. So if you can visualize a Venn diagram and then we come up to what the solution set of actual days for a shutdown and construction. You can think about that we're not going to shut down water on Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. We're not going to shut down water on a Monday, Tuesday because of the cruise ship. And then last week, we had the Taste of Avalon was a Thursday. That left one day. And we're doing 15 valves with this project. So you can imagine that I think they have a 15-day schedule to complete the project. And there's actually 15 valves. And there's no way that we could get that done if we just did it on one day a week. Also, there's, we've heard lots of comments about, can we do this at night? Well, you know that there's several things that happen on these valves. One of them, we jackhammered concrete. And we're also working heavy equipment with backup alarms on them. So at night, around the waterfront, the hotel owners wouldn't like that very much. But, and then during the day, if we're taking shutdowns, then the water's off. And that's not very good for the restaurant. So it's just difficult to be able to plan. You can see with that one day a week and you put those other constraints. And their project is dealing with potable water. Ours with saltwater, they have a lot more restrictions with potable water. And having even the personnel on site that they need there. They're, that have the correct certifications to be on site. So that's just the kind of setting that we're working in. And we can share where we're at right now in the project.
Hi. So we're about a third of our way complete through this project. I want it to be noted that Edison has gone through the effort of doing a twofold means of communication to impacted customers. One is all customers in the city of Avalon that would be potentially impacted by water outages were provided a mailing to the service address of record. And so the customer that has the service address that's in the town, some of those people reside in our community, as you know, and some of those people reside on the mainland. For customers that don't reside here on the mainland, they even called into our 800 number and our customer service line that then routes to Catalina. And they have said, I will not receive your second round of communication, which will be a door hanger 48 to 72 hours prior to your outage. So could you make a phone call to me and let me know when that's going to occur? And to which we have said, yes, we can do so. So like I said, the twofold process is we blanket noticed all customers that could have potential impact. And as work is identified, and each one of these valves, each one of these work locations is very unique. As you know, work in Catalina is. With over 60-year-old system, each of the encounters has to be field assessed. We have to identify an isolation plan that will work. We have to then schedule that work and notify the customers that are to be impacted. And then in some circumstances like that resulted last week, we'll get feedback. Feedback that says, this is not a good day. Please, could you reschedule? And in those cases where it's possible, we have gone through the efforts of rescheduling. In other instances, it's, it's not the most cost-effective option. What works for one customer may not work for another customer. We are trying to accommodate that we are a community where people have residences, people who have hotels with evening water usage and morning water usage, and businesses with some with breakfast, some with lunch, and some with dinner usage. So what we're trying to do is minimize where that disruption and what that timeframe can be. And most of the time, the outage can be curtailed to a four-hour window. But we need to leave time for exceptions. You know that stuff happens. Stuff happens when you go to cut into a pipe. Stuff happens when you go to drain a line. So in those circumstances, we need to leave a couple hours of buffer time. And that's why the window of outage is slightly longer. Unfortunately, there were two emergency instances that occurred last week. Those were not planned jobs. We had an incident where the backhoe bucket engaged with the pipeline that comes to protect the valve. And that caused a fulcrum effect on the top, again of the valve that's over 60 years old. It caused the valve to break. Under those circumstances, this, this valve was scheduled to be replaced in a sequenced event a couple weeks from now. Unfortunately, this happened. And so we had to put all hands on deck, isolate the entire system from the fresh water that comes from Baker Tanks, from the Wrigley Reservoir, and from the desalination plant. And we had to shut down the town. The good thing about that is we were ready. We were ready with a valve, ready to replace it. And we were able to restore service by that evening. If we were not in this position, this emergency could have gone on for more than a day. And we would have been without water service for a lot longer. There's one other situation that occurred on Friday, excuse me, on Thursday that you all know too. No, sorry, Friday. We've been, we've been working so much and getting my days mixed up. So, and on Friday, when we had a problem with the sewer system. So the phone call was, came to Edison, and Edison was asked, can you please turn the water off because we need to curtail the flow to the sewer system so we can control possible dilatory sewer impacts? Edison rose to the effort, and we went ahead and we curtailed water. We went around and deployed all resources to terminate water service. We were already working on this valve project in another location. What we did was we took an opportunity, stopped the work at that other location, and we took the opportunity of this outage to go and move to another location and installed a new valve, a new valve that will now allow us to provide service to the city by two means so that we don't have to go into the situation again. We were able to do that in less time than the, than we planned, which was great. And so when service was allowed to be restored by the city that evening, we had a brand-new valve installed that's on Cabrillo, just down of Cabrillo Drive on Country Club Road. So we're in the position right now to make these improvements. Our target is to get them done before summertime peak. We've seen it with all our water usage. Summertime peak starts in July. Our schedule has us completing by about the 22nd of June. And if we don't manage to complete, we have a couple extra days in that work plan. But right now, we're on track.
Oh, great.
And that will get ourselves in a better position to be ready for summer and hopefully not encounter any of this kind of emergency situation this summer.
Thank you. Are there any questions, council?
I have a couple. A number of people in the community were wondering how we ended up with a May-June-July schedule as opposed to sometime in the off-season?
So the plan is that we have to justify a project need. Then we have to justify funding. And then we have to, as a public utility, we have to justify cost. So we've gone through a competitive bid process. We awarded the bid. And through that process, we pre-qualified the contractor, pre-qualified their work plan, and it got us to a May start date.
And then, once you complete this project, how old will the oldest valves be?
Once we complete this project, there are still valves in our system from 1962. Yes.
Do you know how many?
I don't know off the top of my head, but there are several. We absorbed this system when we took over the water utility in the 60s.
And are there ongoing filings relating to those other valves?
So we do evaluations of our system periodically. And as we find issues, we put them onto a list. And that list then adds up. And then we put together a project to go ahead and do that work. As you know, working at Catalina, you can't just do all sorts of things one-off because the cost is just insurmountable. So as they amount, then you justify that as a set amount of work, a reasonable amount of work, a reasonable amount of cost, and then you deploy efforts to do that. So we, this is, in a sense, a first phase. We're now evaluating the system to say, okay, what would we need to do next?
I guess the thing I find confusing is that under the Public Utilities Commission, you get all your costs back, provided they're reasonable, plus profit. So I understand that you have to go through the process and get pre-approval for that. But if you're going to go through the task of updating them based on age, it's concerning to me that we're still going to have a number of valves, however many, that are going to be just as old as the ones that you're replacing. Is that a fair statement?
The entire system needs to be replaced. But it's not something that we can do all in one year at one time.
So all the valves, I mean, I'm assuming some valves have been replaced over the years, no?
Valves get replaced as they are identified. And so these are the most critical at this time, that we're replacing at this point in time. We will address what we need to do in the subsequent years, you know, as we evaluate the system. The entire system, for the most part, is from about the 1960s with some improvements in the 1980s.
No further questions? Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Thank you for the update. The, David Hart, are we going to do that during? Okay, okay.
Annie, you want to make up the announcement that we're
Oh, and we are back on. So if you ran down here, you can run back home if you want. Debbie's in her jammies, but I see her here somewhere. Thank you for being here. Okay. Announcements and written communications?
Well, it is voting day, and three precincts, I believe, are down at the Catholic Church. And they're open until 8:00 PM. So after you leave here, you can go vote if you haven't voted today. And I, can I just do my written?
Please.
I received a written communications at council and myself from a concerned resident. And it is on items five and number eight, just for the record.
By my name, okay. Okay. Department head reports.
Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. Of course, the big news for Public Works this week was the sewer breakage at Pebbley Beach Road lift station. And there's a lot to say about it. So I want, next meeting, I'd like to bring our staff up because tonight, we're tired. We actually went out at 2:00 this morning and made a redundant setup there so that we're more stable. So just to give a brief briefing so that if anybody's not aware of some of the details, I'll take about a minute here and kind of bring everybody up to date. So at 11:30 on Thurs, this last Thursday, I received a phone call from Van Matting, our wastewater treatment plant supervisor, said, you better get out to Pebbley Beach Road. I think there's something going on there with the line. So as I approached the site, I realized that we were having major sewage leakage out of one of our pipes near our, as you get up to the site, you'll see that we have a backup generator. And underneath that, we were seeing a major leakage there. So called our personnel within 10 minutes, Public Works. And ES Engineering staff responded, brought equipment out. And we set up a perimeter so that we could contain that spill so it wouldn't go. And our first goal was to make sure that it didn't reach the ocean. And then as it became apparent that this was something much bigger, we asked for some other resources, brought everything that we had. I started asking other entities on the island to help us out. SCE, the island company, and construction companies that were on the island, asked them for different pieces of resources to help us contain that. So through that night, we worked to try to find what had been damaged. But we just kept on digging deeper and deeper. And we found out that it was over 12 feet deep. And as we kept on excavating, it just kept on getting worse. So we had two fights to fight. We had a sewage flood to fight and contain that. And then we also had to fight to make the repair. And by 5:00 AM that morning, we thought that we had come up with a solution and had made that repair. And we all went home for a little bit of sleep. But I got a phone call by 7:00 AM that morning that once the flow came back up, that that repair was not indeed going to work. So we came back out there and took a different tact at it. And you'll see that through several holes out there. We were chasing a lot of different pieces of infrastructure that had been put in over the years. And they were kind of intertwined. And something still failed. And we'll find that out within this next week here, now that we have everything stabilized. But our focus then was again, not to have any overflow into the harbor, not to have any overflow in the ocean. If we did have any overflow, it would be in the industrial area there. And so we commenced to make that final setup. And we, by that evening, we asked the water to be, the potable water to be shut down. That morning, I had asked the city manager and Fire Chief Craig for help. And that we needed not to fight those two battles at once. And we fought that one battle to make that repair. Moved over, looked for what would be competent pipe to tie into. And we did facilitate and make that repair. And by 7:45 that evening, the water was back on. And so within this next few days after that, we had to monitor the generator, I mean, not the generator, the pump, 24 hours a day with Public Works and ES staff. And we accomplished that. And then this morning, we went out there after we had a few more supplies. And we did at 2:00 AM, because the flows are down. That's when we put in the redundant setup. So now we have our normal lift station that is pumping with the three pumps through some temporary hoses. And then we also have our redundant pump there with hoses set up. So now we have four pumps available and two different pumps with all kinds of valves to do whatever we need to do. And then we'll approach getting the permanent repairs done within this next month. So any questions on that?
I just have one. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I do feel that tonight is a little too soon to ask for, for any sort of numbers. But is it safe to assume that at our next council meeting, we might have a better understanding of the costs associated with the emergency?
Yes, with the emergency response. I don't have all that tallied yet, but we do have all the hours and, and some of the costs that went into some of the supplies. And then I'll also be approaching you with, this is what I think needs to be my recommendation so that we're not just putting a Band-Aid on it, that we're putting in a system that has redundancy and will serve us for the future. In that general, right in that general area with the pipe. I'm not talking a brand-new whole sewer system here. But right in that lift station, I want to make sure, at least where we're connecting up the pipe, that we have plenty of alternatives for the future.
Perfect.
I was just going to make a general observation. When I owned a cafe, unfortunately, I experienced sewer flow through the drains. And it's a horrible experience. But I hope everyone will appreciate that the Buffalo Nickel and businesses out there will do everything they can. It will be safe to go there. They suffered losses, as did other restaurants, but theirs was additional in terms of the cleanup. And I know you did everything you could to prevent as much backflow for them too. And that we are going to have the crews who actually did, were in the ditches, to thank at the next meeting, which is awesome. And the only thing I'm just going to mention in terms of budget, because we're going to be working on that next time, is I had a question as to whether if we had an additional honey truck, would that have helped this? I'm sure you're going to think of those things, but
Yes. And we did bring our old Vector truck back in service. We actually sent our mechanic up there. So we actually put in two Vector trucks, and the island company lent me their water truck. So we actually had 6,000 gallons that we could transport at that time. So we had all those pieces of infrastructure in place.
But nevertheless, we still had to shut everything off. I mean, the flow's pretty substantial. So I don't know if having additional wind would make a difference, but it's worth exploring, I guess.
Yeah. When you're getting, at that time of the year, 700,000 gallons a day, that's, that's pretty immense. So you better have, you know, a backup plan. So that's why redundant pipelines would be important. Because we can just turn it over to another pipeline through a valve. And then we can handle a little bit of storage and mobilization through the vectors. We can usually, we would be able to handle, we don't have that second pipeline right now.
And is it just because it was underneath that, that big electrical unit that it was so difficult to reach?
Yes. And then since it's sandy, silty soils, and once they become wet, then it's caving. And then it's just an unsafe condition besides the sewage, you know, trying to take that sewage flood. And so that's why we wanted the water shut down so that we at least could see it. Because that's why we abandoned that, the excavation of that hole about, you know, 1:00 in the morning on Thursday and started digging the second and third hole. We were always working on multiple solutions. And that's really how we came on to the solution so quick of getting everything back in order. Even as we were, Friday, we had three or four different solutions with parts all in play and trying to get to the quickest, quickest one that worked at the time.
And then I guess the other thing I wanted to say is the same thing that applies to the restaurant definitely applies to the beaches, that the health department requires the testing, that when the beaches are reopened, it is safe to swim, and people should not be afraid to do so.
Absolutely.
I'd like to comment on a couple things you touched upon, Pam, is that as soon as our insurance carrier, Parsac, was notified on Friday of what was happening, within minutes, they had hooked us up to a couple different companies. One was Restoration Management, the other was Serapis Civic Resources. They sent two representatives over Friday night. They came on a boat. They came and assessed the situation. They're the ones that, then they had a team of 24, I believe, people that came. As well as they were able to mobilize three different cleaning vehicles to come over here. One was a vac truck, one was all their other tools of their trade. And they went into all the restaurants, the restrooms, any storage facilities, sanitized equipment, anything that was on the ground that had been affected. So, and then the other thing that Councilmember Albert has touched upon is that the county has come out and they have tested. We are clean except for one spot, which was away from where we had entered into the bay. They are coming back to retest tomorrow, and we should have everything down by Thursday. Because it takes 24 hours.
That's all I have. Thank you.
So full report in our next meeting. And at that point, we'll bring everybody out and congratulate, you know, all the other departments to help us out. I just don't want to take too much time tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Community Services and Recreation?
David Hart, Community Service Recreation. While we're setting up the video, I'd like to make a few announcements. We have rescheduled our annual day in the bay for this Friday, June 8th, if all safety prohibits us, I mean, allows us to do it. So that is being rescheduled Friday, June 8th, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. As you can see, we got the floats out last week just before it all happened. Also with our teenagers, Matt Casada, our youth leader, has been working hard at remodeling the teen center. You see, I have a little bit of paint on me as well as out there painting today. We're hopefully to have that all remodeled and done by this Saturday. The Lions Club's going to be coming out to be helping along with it. We'll be having a barbecue with the kids and the Lion Clubs because we're, we're trying to start a mentorship program with them. And so people are more than welcome to come out this Saturday and see the new teen center. Also, due to our popularity in the Outrigger Club, the adult program where we have over 50 people, we've decided to move into the teenagers in the high school. And for our, we just started that last week. And we had over 10 kids participate. And we are anticipating even a larger growth because they had a great time for their first time out in the water. And this 4th of July is just And this 4th of July is just right around the corner, and we want to remind everyone that the theme is Avalon, the Beautiful, Living the Beach Life. So, please have as much fun as you can creating your flow. Our grand marshal has been announced. It will be Jenny Eisenhun, and it will be also celebrating her 50th year of ringing the chimes.
Wow. Thank you, Jenny.
Lastly, May 17th, the mayor, along with the community service director, Dan Hunky, and Ms. Schaefer's two daughters went on, went to the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion to help honor Val Schaefer as our LA District's Older Americans Recognition Award. That honors the older residents who reinvest their resources in their communities through sharing their wisdom, talents, and times with others. And we have a little video that was shown there, and so you have a better understanding of who she is and how helpful she is within this community.
I want to add to that, though. They told us to put together a 30 to 40 second video, and I don't know how long that one ended up. But when we got to the thing, all they did was show everybody's face for about 15 seconds. So, so this is exciting to be able to share it today.
This is about 50 seconds to a minute, so. Women's basketball is still open for registrations. So, if you're looking to play and maybe get in shape and have a little fun, the Women's Basketball League is still open for recreation.cityofavalon.com. Please look on that website. Schedules are up there. Our men's Outrigger Program this last weekend took second in the Open Division and second in the Senior Masters. Our women's Open Division took fourth, and our novice group improved by over 18 seconds on their, on their last time.
Perfect. Press your button again. Hit it again. Thanks. When it goes out. There it goes. Oh, he's controlling it.
Technology.
Yes, he's controlling it. Here we go. All right.
Enjoy. Everybody is playing themselves in this video.
Good morning, guys. She's been recognized as the County Boss of the District for 50-year-old American Recognition. Have you guys seen her?
Wow, that's great. Last I saw her, she was doing some work for the Film Festival, and then she was doing some contour for the Arts Association.
I think I saw her at the library.
Abby Arman, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm looking for Val Schaefer for a reward that she's received. Have you seen her?
I haven't. It's a little early for the annual contour, which is going to almost stop, where she's over in town, where they've forgotten to be trying to pitch it. It is the day that she's at the bookstore.
Thanks, you two. I'll take a look. Dave, I've been looking for Val Schaefer all day. Have you seen her?
I know she helps with the holiday dinners at the community church, but that's a little too early for that. I know she volunteers at the Catalina Island Museum, as well as the service. You might want to try that.
Are they going to check the golf course?
Val, we found you. We've been keeping you everywhere in town for you.
Yeah, girls, have a little time by yourself to play golf.
Val, we love you. On behalf of the City of Avalon, thank you for everything that you did.
Val's here tonight. Please stand up, Val. Please stand up, Val. Thank you. We'd like to thank you for the City of Avalon and the community. Thank you.
So, you can see that on YouTube then, right? Is that how you can see that, Dave, on YouTube? Okay.
Dave, I got a question for you. Dave, Mr. Hart?
Dave? One of the people in town asked, are we going to sanitize the play floats on South
Beach?
Yes, we will be doing that as well.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
That was a great video.
Really creative.
Really short, our three favorite projects are moving along on schedule. You'll see concrete trucks going in and out of Vons this next week. They're going to be pouring their concrete slab. They are getting certification to us of the height of the structural steel, so we'll see that certification coming in. Zangrae's moving forward. They've got their plans for their new sewer lateral. We're in plan check, so they'll be replacing the lateral that comes down out of Zangrae. We're happy to see that. Our contract for the LCP update with Moffett Nickel is in rewrites with the city attorney, so we should have that contract out ready to go here shortly. Any questions?
With regard to the planning commission openings, we had three position openings, and the deadline was?
I think it's Friday?
Today?
The fifth?
Wasn't it the fifth or four?
The fifth, I think.
It's on the next agenda, so it's this coming Friday.
Okay. So, will you get those to me for review? Because I wanted to schedule appointments to interview them.
I do not have the applications. I believe they're coming to Denise.
Where do they go? Oh, Denise will give them to me. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Okay? Great.
And Amanda, we still have Moffett and Nichols doing a presentation at the next council meeting on the LCP sea level rise?
I believe so, yes.
Maybe a 10-minute presentation?
Yes. They're going to come in and do just a brief infomercial on what they're doing and introduce themselves, so.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City staff. With the events this week, I'd just like to remind everyone about the reverse 911 Code Red system. It's free to sign up. You go to the city website, click on the Code Red icon, follow some very simple instructions, and you can be downloaded in the database and receive emergency notifications in any format you like. Text message, email, phone line calls, even hearing impaired people can be contacted. And you can, you can select all of those if you like. The, it was also a good reminder, in the grand scheme of things, the town was really only out of salt and fresh water for about a period of about eight hours. Residents should be prepared to stand on their own for three days with fresh water and food. So, it's a good time to remind everyone to make sure they have some sort of disaster supplies, food and water for three days, and you should have about a gallon of water per person in your household. And lastly, I'd like to thank Captain Hawking. Two weeks ago tonight, we did a terrific joint training with the Sheriff's Department and their staff with the Avalon Fire Department Reserve and full-time staff on responding to violent incidents. It was a great opportunity for us to come together and do a joint training for that kind of incident. With that, if you have any questions for me?
Counsel? No? Thank you.
Good evening, Counsel.
As for the harbor, we, kind of going back a little bit to Memorial Day weekend, obviously we had a couple of cold days in there, and we had a total of 342 boats come over for the weekend, Friday through Monday. That's down a little bit from 2017. But then on Friday and Saturday, we had two small craft warnings advisories. So, all in all, it probably wasn't one of the most strongest Memorial Days, but it seemed like everybody had a great time. And we had no discharges, no citations or anything. I was asked to say a couple of words about the boater card, the license that everybody is supposed to have. They're bringing it in year by year. And currently, they can go on the California, CalifornianBoatingCard.com, and they can register to be able to take the test, read the information, take the test, and get a boating certificate. Eventually, everybody that operates a boat will need to have one of these. And if you have a Coast Guard license, then obviously you don't need it. But it, it's out there. All of our staff, we're getting three new part-time guys, and those who don't have a Coast Guard license will have to, have to go through the boating class. So, we're working on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyway, that's about the extent of it, unless you guys have any questions.
Well, and on that boating license, it starts incrementally with like 16 to 20-year-olds. They have to get it by a certain time, and then that older population. So, somebody like me...
You're way down the...
I don't think I'm going to have...
2025.
I'll be buried at sea.
By the time, by the time all this is done, it's, by 2025 is when everybody that owns a boat, operates a boat, has to have their boating card. So, it's going to be, you know, done incrementally and being able to make sure that people are doing it, so.
Oh, great.
Chief Harbor Master, who will be responsible for enforcing that?
We are in our harbor, the Sheriff's Department in county water, State Fish and Game in state water. We're not, we're not taking a heavy-handed enforcement of this. You know, we're warning and advising. And quite honestly, this, I mean, the city, the state makes these mandates, and they don't think about, you know, who has to enforce them and the time it's going to take. So, I mean, we're, we're not here to enforce every rule to the exact statute of the law. We're, we want people to come over, we want them to have fun, we want them to do it safely. And if we're forced to have to write a ticket, it's because you requested it. I mean, as simple as that. You requested the ticket by not adhering to our commands, not answering our questions correctly, and becoming belligerent, then yeah, then we will, we have no problem writing the ticket, so.
What about Joe's rental boats?
I'm not sure how that works out on livery, livery boats, because the public is, you know, they're coming off, that'll probably be the only time they ever have to operate. So, and that in itself is an enforcement nightmare. I, I just can't even imagine what that would be like. So, that's a question I can look into. We haven't, we haven't addressed it because it's probably one of those things that tunnel vision, we really don't want to have to, you know, that's going to affect somebody's business. I mean, it's, if you start enforcing that, that's going to affect livelihood of Joe's rental boats and everything else. And I, I'm not so sure that's what we want to do. So, and every year goes by, we don't have very many issues with Joe's rental boats, you know, crashing, running into things, you know, and if they are, they're all minor. They're not, you know, this law was developed because of boating accidents on the rivers and on the lakes where people don't know how to operate a boat, and in the oceans, don't know how to operate a boat, and then running into jet skis and running into other boaters. So, you know, it, knock on wood, you know, they have little fender benders, but nothing really bad, so.
Well, because you know, for people that come over from the mainland, I can go wherever, charter a boat, never really driven it before, and head on over to Catalina.
You can go out and buy a 70-foot yacht.
Yeah.
Not a problem. Not a problem. You don't got to worry about it.
Until you get here.
I can't buy a 70,000.
Well, yeah. Neither can I. After, after what I've seen over 30 years, I think I'll stay away. Any other questions? Well, thank you for the opportunity. Take care.
Thank you.
Good evening, Captain John Hawking. And just to add a little to JJ's story about the boating license, I just went through the class, and I got my license, the one. Cost $10. I learned so much in that online class that it was outstanding. And then right after that, I went to the two-week law enforcement class on basically enforcing the laws and so forth. And what JJ said is exactly right. It's going to come in slowly based on your age. And the idea is, even if everybody is an in compliance, if you get so many people that are, that makes them safer, and they're safer boaters, and that's what you want.
That's great.
Regarding the Sheriff's Department, everything's going well. Today's election day, and the Sheriff's Department will be taking all the ballots after 8:00 PM over on the sheriff's boat to Long Beach, and then they'll be picking them up and counting the ballots and so forth over there. And we really enjoyed working with Avalon Fire Department on our training together. And in the very near future, we're going to be working with Harbor Patrol, doing the same type of thing. And it's basically active shooter training. And if you have any problem where there's a lot of casualties, that we would be able to go in there, make it safe for the first responders, the fire department, and the people that provide first aid to the victims. And that's about it. Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes.
I did have another question for Harbor Master, Boyn Dexter. Sorry, I wrote it down, but I was so enthralled with the boating class. Could you please give us a status on the installation of the fuel docks for the summer season?
Yes. Now that we've finished with the emergency repairs on float four, where we had to replace the hinges, that's going to be our top priority. I'm hoping to get it in by the 4th of July. I'm not sure that's going to happen. It's just because of, once we get it in, we have to set up the anchors and everything else, and then get it to, see how it's going to fit in there because of the new installation of the pier and stuff. So, I, I know it's the top priority on my list, and it's just like anything else, that other things come up, and we, we do what we can with what we have. But hopefully, that'll happen by the 4th. Okay. I'm just, I'm hoping.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, then I do, I did remind you. When we were talking about dinghy docks at the last council meeting, remember? And so, there was an article in the newspaper, or whenever we talked about, there was an article in the newspaper, you had said something like, what solves the problem is people being off the dinghy docks by, by 3:00 AM. But I asked for clarification. We currently have that rule on one of our dinghy docks, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And that, that opens up our A dock on the pier for all the visitors that come over and want to have dinner, spend the night. They don't leave their skiff there. They come back by 3:00 AM and they, they take it off. A lot of the islanders know that now.
Yeah.
Because when we get one overnight, we end up towing it off at 3:00 in the morning. And it's, it's either a citation or a 72-hour, or a $72 tow fee.
Okay.
And so, a lot of them, instead of getting the citation, that's going to cost you 100 bucks, they'll take the 72.
Oh.
You know, so. And, but the islanders know about it. And that, that's where the issue lies is, you know, because you live here, you still should have opportunity to be able to have a skiff and be able to go out in the water. And people come from the mainland, and you know, they look at our skiffs like, you know, why is this, you know, one man's trash, another man's treasure?
Yeah.
Type of thing. So, well, you do have one, one, and that's actually, it's, it's two floats that they stick out. There's two of them that stick out, so.
All right. Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bob Torres Finance, good evening.
Good evening.
Well, done a couple of payrolls since the last time I spoke to you, continue to pay the bills. Everything looks pretty good. Want to mention, I was at, by coincidence, up at the Parsac Board Meeting last Thursday. We're a member, it's a 36-member pool, and I can report that the pool is in great shape. So, luckily, you know, they're backing us. You know, we did establish an account code for us to capture all the costs related to this incident. And my staff is, and I are here to support all the other departments and Bob Greenlaw and all his efforts in this regard. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I'm good for now. Okay. Thank you. Okay. That ends theirs. Now, we will have council member reports.
City manager?
Oh, and city manager report.
I would like to hop back to announcements because Gabby has something she needs to announce first, and then I'll do mine.
Yes. So, there's been a couple of times over the last couple of months that we've been announcing at city council meetings that the city's transitioning to a new citation processing agency. That transition is now complete. So, as of mid-May, you'll, you've seen our code enforcement use their handheld ticket writers to issue tickets, upload any photos. With that, you could now appeal or pay all your citations online. Now that we have fully made the transition, CPC has... Now that we have fully made the transition, CPC has received all the delinquent citations from our old agency, JDS. So, this first batch that they've sent out last week has been delinquent notices from January two thousand and sixteen. So I just wanna let you guys know that these do not have late fees attached to them. They're the original price of the original violation, they're giving people fifteen days to appeal or pay for these citations. We've experienced a couple hiccups along the way, nothing major. There's been some sort of disconnect between the DMV and CPC. We are able to put a hold on these accounts while the person needs to, you know, request a copy of their certificate of liability from the DMV. So, we put these on hold until they receive their documentation and are able to pass that on to CPC for their appeal. With the help of the Finance Department, we've been able to really solve a lot of stuff in-house. Little instances where they have made their payments to City Hall and that it translates to CPC. So, with the help of the Finance Department, we've been able to cross-reference our files and have come up with that proof of payment. So, this, after this first batch, it should be smooth sailing, it's just, it took a while for this new agency to kinda play catch-up because they had to manually enter all the data over a year and a half, so.
And I will tell you, those new little tickets are a little harder to see on your window, I got one this morning. So, so, so just, and I paid it already. So anyway, just be careful, they're kinda small, but they're, it cuts down the time incredibly, I think, for the, for code out there, so it is a good system.
Annie, did you get your picture taken for the wall of shame where all the employees that get tickets, we take pictures of us paying them?
Well, he didn't, he didn't ask me to pose, so I don't know, I wasn't by the vehicle, so how could he have taken my picture? He's got a good picture of the, of the pickup truck, though, I'm sure, so anyway, good job, guys, though. Okay, all right, city attorney report.
Nothing.
Oh, okay.
Cal. Annie, I just wanted to, everyone already has, but I just wanted to thank city staff and ES for all their hard work during this incident, and particularly Bob Greenlaw and Fire Chief Krug. And it's amazing to see the whole thing fold out and just city staff just immediately stepping forward and finding things to do, whether they just said, Denise, you want me to order this water, or just things before you could even think of it, different staff members were, then we had others that were like, I didn't know what to do, you know, we were just like carrying on. Yes, that was an important role because the rest of us were being pulled from the situ, into the situation that they continued on and provided the service to the public, so. It was a great learning experience and I wanna thank everybody for it.
Yeah, it was wonderful. Council, does a new girl wanna start?
No, I have nothing to say yet.
I went to Contract Cities Annual Meeting a couple weeks ago. They spoke about the ongoing pension liability issues and the post-employment liability for health and such. No big solutions out there, they also spoke about homeless, which is always the exciting thing. And Sheriff McDonald was there and talking about the inability that Sheriff's Department has of getting new employees. They can't find qualified people, and when you see what you see on TV, you can kinda understand why the poor guys don't wanna get yelled at and, you know, pictures. And tomorrow I'm gonna go to Sacramento for Contract, for League of California Cities Rev and Tax Committee and Community Services.
Yeah, there, I was in contact with the gentleman, there's a letter that they would like us to write in support of, to send to, I think Supervisor Hahn, in support of being able to recruit and keep local sheriffs because they're having such a problem, but I, I didn't know what the ALDA stood for, and so I was looking for that, but I have a sample letter that, if so, we can bring it next council and see if you all wanna do that. Because this is important, and what a great place to be a sheriff, right here in Avalon, so.
Not bad.
Okay.
Not bad.
And Councilman Hernandez?
I just have one little quick thing, I've had a couple people come up to me, the concern about the deer coming down in town again, and feeding deer and stuff like that, I know there's a lot of Lyme disease coming back again.
Yeah.
And that's how you kinda contract, contact it with, with the deer. They have contacted, I guess, the fishing game about it, and the fishing game said, when it's in the city limits, it's not their responsibility, it'd be the responsibility of the city. I don't know if they're just throwing, passing the buck back and forth, no, that's a word. Anyway, but they were saying they contacted them and they said, when it's in the city limits, it's up to the city to enforce the problem. And I said that I'd bring it up and see if we could look into it and maybe contact them and find out.
Okay.
What's really going on, 'cause they're kinda concerned, 'cause now it's getting to be the dry season, there's no food out there for the deer. They're coming in town a little bit, there's water here, so we just wanted to make sure everybody aware of that.
Right.
Because it's out there right now.
Remember a couple years ago, we had Fishing Game come and, and give a presentation? Maybe, now might be a good time to pull that back and just talk about, because part of that presentation included the reasons why you shouldn't feed the deer and how it's bad for their digestive systems in general and all of the other issues that that can cause. But just the, the safety issues in, in general with them being in town.
We can bring that back next meeting.
Well, there also, there also needs to be a conversation, though, they give them five hundred deer tags, they give this conservancy five hundred deer tags a year. We have a handful of local hunters that get the tags, and then the visitors that come, it's quite expensive to hunt. And if you, and if you come over for, for a weekend to hunt a deer, you don't, and you get your two tags, and you don't kill them, you're not, you probably aren't gonna come back and back and back because it's expensive. So, they're never, they're never gonna be able to get a handle on the number, if they're not, if they're not eating five hundred deer and doe every year, it'll, the problem just keeps exacerbating itself, so I don't know where the discussion needs to be with Fishing Game and the conservancy, or how do, how do they beef that program up, or something that's, I'm not gonna say birth control, but I don't know. It, it is their issue, but, but yes, they do walk on our street.
Next one?
Okay.
It's been a busy couple weeks, not in any particular order, but I will report Mayor Marshall and myself, as representatives of the city, met with members of Edison and various island stakeholders regarding an upcoming water rate advice letter planned by Edison. And we do have an item on our agenda tonight, so I'm not gonna say too much more about that, we can talk about it during the agenda item. Additionally, this meeting also yielded some additional answers to questions that I know members of our community have been asking. And that is, number one, the reservoir is currently at six hundred and sixty-eight acre feet. Although we are currently still at stage one officially, the reservoir level will likely drop below six hundred feet by August of two thousand and eighteen, which would have put us in the stage one rationing. Stage two water rationing is projected at this point to be August of two, twenty twenty, should the island receive no significant rainfall between now and then. So that was another piece of information that came. Mayor Marshall and myself also attended the opening ceremonies for the Catalina Island Yacht Club and on Saturday, May twenty-sixth. And I think we were both delighted to help them ring in their ninety-sixth season here in Avalon. I also attended the Memorial Day services at the Avalon Cemetery on May, Monday, May twenty-eighth, beautiful service. It was actually the first time I've been on the island during Memorial Day, so I was very excited to be their commander, the new commander, for first time in history, Jen Dryson, a female commander of the VFW, gave a beautiful speech along with Cal Parsons, shared a life story of David Allen, who lost his life in service, who grew up on the island. It was a beautiful tribute. Let's see, city manager Denise Ratty, Audra McDonald, and myself had a conference call with Los Angeles County Councilmember and SCA QMD Board Member Joe Buscayino, who is a huge friend of Avalon's. Matt Mia Sato, Deputy Executive Director of SCA QMD, and additional staff members of both to inform them of our history with the E-buses and their subsequent demise. And we've begun discussions, whereas they're extremely interested in helping the city of Avalon search for additional grant funding and operational solutions for our transit system. So we're hoping to have more of an update before the end of June. Came at a great time, as we'd hope to have some ideas for the upcoming transit study session that we're having. And I'll be attending Gateway Cities Council of Government Monthly Board Meeting tomorrow, as well as the COGS Retreat that will be held here in Avalon on June fifteenth and sixteenth, and that's it.
Okay. So, yeah, I attended the hospital board meeting, I went to the chili cook-off, which was great, Memorial Day. We had a community action committee, Cindy was there as well, and members of the community, basically talking about the issues around our young people and, and the school, and law enforcement was there, so we were all there, we were very, Island Company was there, we were all very well represented. We're gonna keep talking again about what we can do. I believe in Cindy, if I'm saying something out of turn, did you say that superintendent may be coming over to Avalon in July?
We do have an assistant superintendent coming to meet with a previously selected group of parents who reached out to the superintendent to talk about some of the concerns at the school, and it will be one of, we hope, many meetings.
Right.
So it's, it's sort of a initial meeting and, and then hopefully more coming.
Okay, also attended a parenting class that was provided at the school, there were probably eight families there, it was really good stuff. If anybody needs resource materials, I've got my set, but Rhonda from Choices can be very helpful. We had a sub, Rhonda, myself, and the hospital had a substance abuse resource meeting with Ann Hahn, I don't remember her last name, from County Public Health, to talk about drug and alcohol services and how to get them here. One of the issues would be a location, and one of the things that we were talking about was just the consistency in that. It can't just go for a couple months and say, oh, well, nobody showed up, so we're gonna drop it, it's gotta be something that's ongoing. So as we learn, get more of that going. Okay, so that's all that. Also, though, I, I visited the Falconry Education Adventure out at Descanso Beach, and David Long and, Dave Long and his wife Gina are doing that. You need to see this, it's incredible, and you need to see the little Eurasian Al Ruby before she gets to full height, 'cause right now she's just fluffy and adorable. Okay, there's a tree on Metropole that has been transplanted and is still dying. There's the one in front of Bay of the Seven Moons that has prospered, but supposedly, so the one in front of your place. Supposedly, there's a sledge, when they did all that work there, the ground is just bad. So the thing is just dead, doesn't matter, I mean, it's dead, doesn't matter how much water you put on it. So I don't know if we wanna go back to pulling it out or putting something, if we feel we need a tree, putting it back in some kind of a planter. I don't know, because everything that is in that one spot continues to die, and you can attest to that, Councilwoman? Okay, so anyway, that's that. Chairlift, just a quick update?
So we didn't receive bids on the first round, and we issued an addendum, and so I'm outreach to contractors, seeking, you know, bids from them. The next round of bids would close this Friday.
Okay.
Okay, so I did talk to two contractors today, trying to encourage them to get bids to us.
Our seniors are, they just want that chairlift, I mean, it's so sad, it's something that, appearing that simple can be so difficult.
I think we'll be successful soon.
This next time, thank you, Bob, for following it.
Is it appropriate for, to, if, like, if I wanted to share that with somebody I knew, a stairlift company, is it appropriate for me to share that RFP with them?
Yes, yeah, you just show them to our website, and it's all you're doing, we're just encouraging anybody we can to, to go to our website. And so that's all we're doing, is we're just promoting it out there, okay? And we're trying to do that in any way possible, okay? But we're sharing any information that we have, that's similar to any contractor, so if there's questions, if they ask us a question, we would share that with all contractors, so it's all on even playing field.
Okay, thank you. Something I briefly mentioned to the city attorney before the meeting, I have been getting calls for smoke complaints. And some of it is with regard to cannabis, some of it is in regards to people having their smokers out by somebody's house. And as we know, everybody's house is closed together, so one lady has COPD, and, you know, she even closes her door, windows, but that doesn't work. Somebody else has a young child next to somebody who's a, who is a, who enjoys their cannabis or takes their medicine. And I don't know if there's anything that can be done other than asking people that are smoking cannabis to limit it to some kind of a vape pen or whatever, because we seem to be getting a lot, I don't know if anybody else is getting complaints about the cannabis smoke, but I seem to be. So I don't know if that's something we would ask, or is it just, there's really nothing we can do, and maybe neighbors just need to be neighborly?
What I could do is, if this council approves, I can just send an email to our cannabis code enforcement and just see what other cities' experience has been with respect to secondhand smoke from people smoking. It's, it's, the situation would be, you have someone smoking in an apartment, and is it a nuisance when the secondhand smoke goes to adjacent properties?
Right, 'cause then they could.
Just give it, and see, see what our experience is in that.
Okay, 'cause some of them go out on the balcony and smoke, you know, which, okay, you, you know the problem, you know this. Is, I mean, is that something we wanna ask the question, or is that just a waste of time?
Knowledge is a good thing.
Knowledge is a good thing, okay, all righty. Another, as we try to, you know, assimilate and unite our community more and more, and I know we talk about Spanish translation. Is it, and, and I think, I don't know if Mr. Grady is still back there, but is it expensive or difficult? 'Cause I don't know anything about the technology, to get things that translate on-site, I mean.
For, for the written word, Annie, or the oral?
For the oral, do we have any options for oral other than have somebody sitting here?
I know we've gotten quotes just for our agenda and that type of written word and notifications, but I, I don't know if we've looked into translating.
Okay, what the school, oh, see, the school has these, these headsets, 'cause they did it at the parenting class, but you still needed somebody translating it to go into the headset, so they wouldn't hear the, the outside noise, I guess. So, I just went, trying to see how much, to get more involvement from the Hispanic community and.
Mayor, so my experience is that live translation is very expensive, I mean, because they're required to do it in the courts. But I did have an observation, which is, when you pull up the city council agenda packet, you can't use the Google Translate. But if we use the Google Translate on the documents and then uploaded them maybe into a separate Spanish packet, that I think would enable Spanish speakers to, to see what's on the agenda, at least.
Is, I don't know, perhaps something maybe like that?
Yes, well.
Okay. One of the other things I mentioned to Denise, the city manager the other day, was the expiration of the taxi tickets. I have a problem with that, we have, we have paid for the ticket books, the people have paid their money, and if there's any way we can look into how that, that could be rectified. And the, the other one, at some point, I'm, well, again, with consensus, and the other one is the expiration of the, of the commuter books. I know it says in their tariff they can expire, but I don't, I think we might need to be proactive, because again, that's big money being paid for. Big money being paid for by the city and, and the people that buy the ticket books. So I don't know if that's of interest to any of you, that we check that out?
I would be interested.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not a carton of milk.
Exactly, and then, I have two more things, I'm so sorry. CUPs and variances, it seems like we're issuing a lot of those. And it would be, I don't know to where direction should be, those, those also, those variances and those things cost the people money, correct? So if they want a variance, they have to pay extra?
There's an application fee for a variance.
Okay, and how about for this, for the conditional use permits as well?
Yes.
They have to pay for those, not that, okay, we like the money, however, for some of these things, it seems like if we could streamline or develop some other criteria, so we wouldn't have to have so many variances, that might be nice.
Well, we, the planning commission is actually looking at that, at the meeting in two weeks about variances for signs and looking at the sign ordinance. And we did provide them with some, a brief on variances at the last planning commission meeting. But they're gonna look at that at the next meeting, specific to signs, and whether they wanna adjust the sign ordinance, because variances have been granted on sign.
But is that all? Signs are the only thing we're concerned with? Signs are the only thing we're concerned with?
Well, again, the direction from the planning commission, at least, was, let's look at this at signs. If you want to have them look at it broader, variances, we can have them do that.
Well, and I suspect that that's something you would want to talk to the applicants for the planning commission about as well, because in some respects, it's a philosophical holding by particular commissioners as opposed to how the law reads. That's my observation.
Okay, I don't quite understand that.
I, I think that certain people feel more lax, that, that people who own property should be able to do more, whereas some people feel that the purpose of having a planning commission is to plan, and therefore, that involves restrictions on what people can do with their property.
And so, if you have restrictions, there would not be as, that would not be as many variances as CUPs?
I don't know if it's a question of variances as much as having equitable and even application of the law to everybody who's in a similar situation. That, that's kind of my concern.
Okay. So, do we just want to wait, then, and see what the planning commission comes up with on variances, and then if we need to talk about conditional use permits?
Amanda? I think variances apply to a lot of different things. You can get variances to a height envelope. You can get a variance to a setback. You can get a variance to your Florida lot coverage. You can get a parking variance. We do sign variances. We are going to bring the sign ordinance back, because there seems to be a philosophy that the signage maybe along Crescent Avenue should be different than signage for businesses that face out onto streets where there's vehicle traffic. So, the, and we've also realized that the impact of the illumination not within three hundred feet of a residence is going to create some real hardship of all the businesses downtown, because there's residences even in the commercial zone. So, I think there was some unintended consequences of that. So, when you talk about variances in general, I think part of the issue is our development standards were written in the sixties or seventies. So, let's say up on Upper Marilla, the setbacks on those properties may be ten feet, but nobody has setbacks of ten feet between their homes. Very few people do. So, when someone wants to come in and upgrade their property, they want to have the same use of their property as everyone else. So, it's a challenge for us, I think, partly because our code is, was written perhaps with a hopeful idea of what development would be, and it doesn't really reflect what's out there. And so, when you're working with mostly infill development, where you're just redeveloping what's already there, it creates some challenges for us. And so, you see more variances than maybe you would expect.
So, so, you mentioned the development standards. Is that something we need to be looking at?
If you want us to.
I mean...
So, amend the LCP.
Which we're already having amended right now.
Right. We're doing, the current LCP amendment is just to address sea level rise and climate change.
Oh, right, right, right.
And then, we're going to have the second phase where we're going to redo the whole thing.
And what you're saying, Councilwoman, we don't have the money?
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know that we've, there's certainly not money in the current budget. I don't know if we're allocating additional monies for review of this. I think, you know, part of, I don't really have a good handle on how, you know, what variances, how many are being requested, and what categories do they fall into? Is it just like an exceptional thing here and there, but it adds up? Or is it, does it seem like every application that's being submitted includes a variance request? I don't, I don't have a feel for that. Maybe it would be helpful just to have a report and some feedback to the planning commission before they start their process.
Well, and I think it, it might be helpful to have some examples of what variances you're concerned with. Some people may be granted a variance, and it's only for four inches. You know, they need something that just makes something work, they only need something. And then, you've got people that may want a variance, and they're looking for a fifteen or twenty feet difference. So, I think variances come in degrees. So, maybe a little more directive of what your concerns are.
Would you like a report for maybe the last two years, which would be twenty-four?
Yeah, we could do that. We could come down and tell you of the variances that were granted.
Well, that versus how many total projects as well?
Right, no, what you can do is, you can do it as total projects, then percent of projects requesting variances, and the percentage of variances granted.
Yeah. And commercial versus residential?
You can break it down to that way, too.
Sure.
Total versus variance, commercial versus residential.
Versus location. Mountains versus the flats.
Well, our list will include the street addresses, so that'll kind of tell you where they are.
Do you have zones?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Commercial, special commercial, load-in, some immediate...
Oh, those kinds of, Zone one, two, three, and four. I know, this is good enough. Thank you. Yeah.
And then, you, well, you started, a part of your comment that you were making had to do with CUPs as well?
Yes.
And I don't know if the conditional use permits that you were talking about had, were the homes for transient rentals?
Well, they, I know they, I know the planning commission already discussed that. That is a discussion I would like us to have.
Agreed. That's what I was going to ask, is, first of all, can, can we, at some point, and I don't know if we can work that into one of our work meetings, if it fits, or if we can have that as a separate discussion for council to talk about CUPs and the process that the planning commission, there...
That was already, a couple of meetings ago, I believe, and we were punting that till August or September, October.
That's right. We did.
I can't remember.
You're right.
And my understanding is, too, just to kind of bring it around, so, I'm on that Los Angeles County Commission on Local Government Services, and we are undertaking a study of what's happening countywide, as well as bringing in experts from other jurisdictions to talk about their evaluation, more on affordability of housing and availability of housing. But I, I think that's part of what we are concerned about here. So, I'll bring that information.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for that reminder. I do remember that now.
Okay, and then, one other thing. We, you know, the county, the community has talked about a community garden for some time, and run into, well, we really don't have any place to put it. But I talked to Micah Phillips, who's in the audience here somewhere. There he is, in the back. And we kind of walked around to see what we, what we could find. And, you know, we looked at where the buses were, well, that, the soil's not good, but then we talked about, about making the boxes where you could grow it in the boxes. Well, then, you've got the fencing that you need, because of the deer, and the, you know, goes around and around. But we did come up with something, and if Micah would just, if she wants to say anything briefly, where we have, where the eagle, where the eagles and the falcons, where the falcons used to be in that casita, it's all enclosed, and it's just kind of sitting there. And I have seen, and Micah has seen, the operation that they have up at Fine Line, where they grow, do hydroponics.
Straight up.
I mean, straight up, I'm sorry. Straight up with hydroponics. They have the tilapia that eat and poop, and that's the fertilizer and, you know, and anyway. So, I was wondering if the council would consider, and talking with whatever, about maybe using that for a community garden space, because it's a very limited space. It's already got a lock on it, and the deer can't get to it. So, I don't know.
Before you made a decision on that, if we have monies in the budget, because the last two years, I think we put money in to redo that casita, so we would have the housing for consultants and stuff, so we'd offset the cost of our hotels, so could, we could get your feel for it, but not commit anything until we hit the budget.
Hit the budget, and then look at the timing of the building of the casita and all of that, but, go ahead.
Well, I'll throw the recommendation out, that I would certainly be happy to reach out to the initial organizer of the, the community garden that's up at the school. Because many, many, many members of the community donated supplies, donated the construction, the time to construct that garden. And it's my understanding that it's not used right now, and I could be wrong, but I would be happy to reach out and see if that's a possibility as well. And it may have some constraints with Long Beach Unified School District, but it's something that is worth looking into.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, we did talk about that, so that's a great, if you would look into that.
I'll put that on my to-do list.
Okay.
Maybe we could add that to their reciprocal use permit.
Agreed.
Exactly.
Add it to what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Their reciprocal use agreement that we have with Long Beach Unified.
Yeah, excellent. I mean, you know, you look, there's a lot of dead space right in here, but, but I think the fencing and all of that would be astronomical, and it, and the community that's asking for the garden isn't really asking for any money from the city. So, I think there's enough of an interest as well that it would, it could get going. Micah, did, did I represent it okay, or do you want to add something?
No, I'm okay.
Okay. All righty. Great. Okay. Moving right along to oral communication. This is where we start at five. This is an opportunity for members of the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Speakers should limit themselves to three minutes, and no action will be taken. Is there anything?
Paula Patterson, 221 Whitley. I was just going to mention to you that I've been talking with Hillary, who organizes the Friday night lectures at the conservancy, and they're really frustrated about the deer situation as well. She has been working with a gentleman in town who has created a proposal for fish and game, and, but she's, like, hit a wall. She just doesn't know where else to go, because it, it means, like, making exceptions for, anyway, and where to go and who to approach. But it might be helpful to speak with her, because she's already done a ton of groundwork as this gentleman. And then, the other thing I was going to say is, I'll wait till next meeting to join everyone in saying thank you to all the people that worked on this crazy week. And then, how wonderful it was to get the texts and the phone calls from the Code Red system, and that was so helpful. But for as many people that said, oh, yeah, I got them, I talked to as many people that said, oh, no, I didn't get it. And so, I'm thinking maybe it would be, in this instant, I mean, this was three days. What if it was ten days? I mean, if, if maybe we put public service announcements on the board in the, in Spanish and English in the arcade, and maybe just a one-time shot in the Islander translated, and then also that those messages be translated. But what a gift that was, because everybody's, what, what, and there's more rumor than truth. So, anyway, thanks, thanks. That was so helpful.
Thank you.
Paula, what was the name of the lady at the conservancy?
Her name is Hillary, and I can't tell you her last name, but she organizes the Friday night...
What's her name?
Holt. Okay. Yeah, and, and she has a lot of information and can, can put you on this gentleman, too, that has created a proposal for fishing game. And I told her, do you need signatures? Do you need a petition? What, what is it that we can do as a community to solve this issue? Because it's just unbelievable, if you ask me, so, and dangerous.
Yes. Any other? Okay, then we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Good night, Bob Greenlaw.
Yeah. Sleep tight.
Okay. This evening, we have five items on the consent calendar. We have two sets of actions, one from the May fifteenth special study session, and one from the regular city council meeting. Number two is to adopt a resolution approving the annual application for TDA Article Eight funds for fiscal year 2018-19. Three is to adopt the updated City of Avalon Civil Rights Title VI Plan. Number four is to renew the taxi voucher program operated by Catalina Transportation Services in an amount not to exceed $96,000 for fiscal year 2018-19. I just want to point out that that's not increasing that amount, it's the same amount from last year's contract. Number five, it is to approve sending a letter to the California Public Utilities Commission in support of a letter sent from the Catalina Rate Payers Representatives regarding a proposed rate increase by Southern California Edison.
I have two things. City Attorney, is it your advice that I should abstain if I missed the meeting that's, for which actions are being adopted?
If you have not made yourself aware of what transpired during that, then, if you watched it, then you can participate.
All right. And then, I would request to pull item five, please.
Any others to be pulled? Okay.
Move staff from one to four.
Second.
Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Okay, item number five?
I got some various background, which apparently, you know, really isn't written in the staff report here, because I understand the city manager was kind of in the dark about this meeting, because she was not in attendance. I understand that not only did council member McGugan attend, and the mayor, but also Councilman Olson, and that the invite was made by the Edison, and that participants were given information, but there were no handouts or anything, and a lot of important information was covered. So, my understanding is that Norris Bishden was one of the participants who was very helpful to this community when Edison made an application for a rate increase back in 2010. And I think it's important to just kind of go over the, how that process worked. So, Edison is a Class B, or, I'm sorry, a Class C utility when it comes to water, which means that they're smaller than others, and that the Water Rate Division spends most of its time on the bigger utilities. Because it's a Class C, it's discretionary as to how it goes about filing for a rate increase. They can file for an advice letter, which is essentially a more abbreviated process. But in the, in 2010, Mr. Bishden, along with the city and other interested parties, pushed the Water Rate Division, and they required the case to be heard as what's called a general rate case, which means that there's an administrative law judge assigned, the Office of Ratepayer Advocates is involved, it's an adversary hearing in the sense that you can file discovery requests, there's motions, there's evidentiary rulings. It's, it's a more rigorous examination of the basis on which the application is being filed. That application, Edison originally indicated that they had, I want to say, seven and a half million dollars that they were seeking to recover. And keep in mind that Edison is a regulated monopoly. So, in exchange for the guarantee of certain profits, they subject themselves to the regulatory process of the CPUC. And the CPUC is there to protect the rate payer's interests and to make sure that the rates are set in a reasonable fashion. So, in reading through this letter, I had real concerns. I reached out to Mr. Bishden, and, I'm sorry, but I got off the phone with him at 25:05, so I didn't have the opportunity to share this with the city manager or the city attorney. But it was his feeling on reflection that this meeting really lacked transparency, and that it's not really clear what benefit comes to the city or the rate, the ratepayers, the citizens of Avalon, by proceeding with, okay, sure, we'll do this in an abbreviated fashion to determine how much Edison is entitled to for an increase. And I'd be the first, I think we all would say, obviously Edison has had expenditures, notwithstanding the million dollars of government taxpayer money that went to help buy, decel number-two plant and put it into operation. Clearly, they have expenditures also. But my understanding is from this meeting that they were proposing that they have $20 million in, that they are going to seek to recover, which breaks down to about $11,700 per person, every man-child in, in town. So, it seems to me that we want to make sure that those numbers are subjected to the same kind of rigorous review that they would normally, that would always be, that they, that they were done before, that we do that again now. Because from my understanding of the numbers that they were talking about, it's like a 220% increase in certain instances, which is just more than anybody can bear. And in looking back at the 2010 proceeding, they started out with seven and a half million, and the administrative law judge only found four million in reasonable, just expenses that they were entitled to. So, on that basis, I told Mr. Bishden that I was going to carry to the, the city council that, instead of approving this now, we set up in short order a meeting that all of these participants can come, including the conservancy, which was not able to go to the other meeting. My preference would be that it be a public meeting. There's nothing to hide here. This is, everybody should be interested in this. If Edison wants to attend and provide more information, or explain why they think it's to the benefit to do an abbreviated evaluation as opposed to the more rigorous, I think they should be able to do that. So, that's, would be my vote on this.
And Norris, at this time, it, it's not that urgent that this letter go out in the next few days?
No. And in all fairness, the, I did ask for this item to be on the agenda. After the meeting, Norris sent his thoughts to some of the participants in the meeting, and there was just an extraordinary amount of information and history that he was sharing. And when he... And when he proposed to, you know, a group via email to write this letter and it listed the City of Avalon, my first thought was, we need to talk as a council to determine whether or not we want the City of Avalon listed. Most importantly, though, the City of Avalon needs to be listed because we are the elected officials representing the ratepayers in Avalon. We're the ones that are standing up for our community and wanting as much information as we can get. Where the real issue came from that I saw in that meeting is that, yes, the information that was being presented was Norris Bishden did ask for it and Edison said, "This is, you know, this is our proprietary information at this time." And then there was a concern whether or not Mr. Bishden would want to read, you know, hundreds, if not 1,000 pages or more. And so he certainly was willing to do so. And so when he drafted this letter to just sort of get the ball rolling, it was basically to make sure that we got ahead of this before the advice letter was drafted and sent to the PUC so that we had a fighting chance to get the information before. Whereas the rate case prior, the information was after the fact. And that's what sparked a lot of the issues in moving forward in so many years' worth of it. So in moving forward, you know, we do want to be involved as a city. And we, I would, I mean, I couldn't imagine anybody not wanting to be involved as a city or not have all the information, not have all the documents that are going to the PUC before they're actually submitted. That's what we're asking for, is that before the PUC.
And after discussing it with Mr. Bishden, he said that on, rethinking it through again, that he agreed that actually a better position might be, the one that was taken in the other one, which is, an advice letter is not appropriate under these circumstances. It's a huge amount of money.
Right.
It's a huge impact on our community. And we're not going to agree that that's the appropriate process, that from the get-go, we say, "No, this should be a general rate case."
Exactly, that's exactly what.
But that's not what this letter says.
Right.
It's not even close to saying that.
And so if you, if you listen to what I was saying, that at the time that I asked for this item to go on, it was within 24 hours of the draft letter. And none of us have spoke about it. I haven't spoke about it with the city manager. I haven't received much further information on it. So I do agree that there's.
For me, since I wasn't at that meeting, and I would assume the same would apply to Councilman Hernandez, that if you go through the staff report and the letter itself, you would be clueless that any of that had happened. And I do, will say that the mayor shared with me the information that had been received from Mr. Bishden. And I called him mainly because his letter said, "This is not to be shared with anybody." And I wanted to let him know, or just to confirm with him, that it was appropriate for me to have it. And from there, we went into this larger discussion. And I, you know, he knows better than anybody else, really, what the deal is, having lived through this. And the end of the conversation, what he said was, "We're moving too fast. Let's slow it down, let's think this through and make sure that we're getting, that there's a reason to do this," which I don't think there is. Okay. So I'm going to move to table the letter and to ask the city manager to set up a meeting with the interested parties and to invite Edison at a special public meeting.
Second.
Okay, moved in second on both of those. And public comment? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Judy, thank you for coming.
Can you do that?
Oh, Val.
Of course, Val, but Judy came over just to watch the video. Okay.
Oh, I thought you were talking about Judy Greer.
Item number six. Okay.
This is a, was going to be the public hearing of our fee schedule. We had publicly noticed it for two weeks running. And there are no fees attached. Nothing has been attached to our website yet because we wanted to be sure that we had the required backup material to justify the fee increase. We were being overzealous and with the budget process and Mr. Torres being voluntold to go to Parsak to the board meeting for me that. So what I would just like to be able to, because we had already published it, to open the meeting if there are any public comments and then to have a motion that we continue this public hearing until June 19.
But that doesn't, because the public hearings, there's usually two?
Well, no. No. We modified the rules. So there's one public hearing, but the fee schedule has to be available 10 days before. And it's not ready yet. So what we would do is we would continue it to a date certain. We'd open the public hearing so we don't have to take the ads out of the newspaper again. Continue it to a date certain, which is two weeks from today. And on Friday, that fee schedule will be available both on the website and in the city clerk's office for people to look at what the fees are and the justification for those fees.
So typically, they would have?
10 days.
10 days, and now they're really going to have three days to review it, four days to review it.
No, no, no. It'll still be 10 days. And if it's not ready by Friday, then it has to be delayed again.
Okay.
My sense is that the cost of the ads is minimal compared to trying to make sure that the public knows that the fees are available, when they're available and when they're actually going to be adopted. So I would prefer to just have staff pull this and put it when it's ready. Put it on when it's ready.
Put it all together.
I just feel I opened a public hearing and you can't say anything. I mean, what are you going to say? Hold it over.
That's it, that's what we were asking for, the motion to hold it over to the June 19 meeting. If your direction is to republish it, then we will do that.
Then we won't hear it on the June 19 meeting if we republish? Because don't you have to publish twice?
Yes.
Oh, that's what I asked, and you said no, you just had to do it once?
Well, no. I thought you meant reading it twice because it used to be that you had to. It used to be that you had to do the resolutions twice. Now it's just once, but you have to notice it in the newspaper.
So there has to be a notice in the paper 10 days before that says, "On such and such a date, these fees are going to be considered." And those fees and the backup is now available at City Hall?
Correct.
And you were wanting to, so that we could enact them? Okay, so let's say, because this was to be enacted on July 1, that was kind of the goal?
Right. That's our normal fiscal year.
Right. So then all it does is delay it by two weeks, the fees?
Yes, because it's adopted by resolution so that these are effective immediately. So it would be, if you renoticed it, it would be whenever, again, looking at the calendar, we haven't yet decided, I think, if we're going to have a meeting right around the 4th of July. So it may be the second meeting in July. But it would be three weeks of potential lost revenue.
Or we may have to move the July meeting to something other than July 5, depending on how busy our July is.
But if we open the public hearing now and we carry it over to the June 19 meeting, we can still hear the fee schedule.
Yes.
We could adopt it by the end of.
And they'll get them on, they'll be out by Friday, you're saying? But then they wouldn't be published?
So I'm fine with that as long as a notice goes in that says, "This is the date it's going to be considered." I mean, it doesn't have to be the full 10 days. If we do it that way, that's fine. But I still think we need to have some notice that says.
So I think what we'll do is, even though it's not legally required to have another ad in the newspaper, we'll have another ad in the newspaper and we'll put it on the web Friday so that there's that notice. And so, and then again, on the 19th, you can adopt the fees or not.
Can we put those, can we put this, do we put notices in the, on television? On Channel 3 or 29 or whatever it is?
You can put it on the City Web, right?
I know, but.
We can put an ad on there advising people that the fees are available in City Hall.
Just as much as we can get, I just, and I don't think they're going to charge us for that channel. If they, I don't think they're going to charge us to put it on the cable. Because they have to do so much public service as a cable company. So they should do it for nothing.
Well, their franchise is up, so we'll see.
Well, then it better be free. Okay. Alrighty, so we're going to open the public hearing to hear public comments. Are there any public comments?
This is Debbie.
Yes.
Please.
Hey, Debbie.
Yes.
Yep.
So this is about all kinds of things that the city charges for, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, and it says all these things like Recreation Planning and Building Administration. So I'm just going to, you know, I don't know if this is the forum or what it is. But I just wanted to bring back into play, I know Planning and Building, I know this is a fee schedule, but I just don't want everybody to forget developers' fees. You know, come on, let's, okay, okay. I'm just saying, I don't want to, because I was going to say something, but Mr. Greenlaw didn't eat anymore on his plate today. And so, but then the other thing I wanted to ask, because it's on the agenda and I don't know if it's appropriate, but it seems that encroachments are now, we're seeing these and there's a couple on here. And there is a fee for encroachments? Can I ask about this?
Yes.
And is it, what is the fee? Can anybody tell me what the fee is? Does anybody know? $218 for an encroachment?
That is the application fee. And then what happens is with each encroachment permit that the council considers, there is another deposit with each fee that would go toward the cost of the city removing the encroachment if the applicant decided that, if the city decided, "Okay, your time is done. You have to move it." And if the applicant doesn't remove it, then there's a fee in the encroachment permit to cover the cost of the city removing whatever is put in the public right of way.
And how about repairs? If there was an issue that an encroachment and there was a repair needed on that encroachment, who carries that fee?
That is, again, that is part of the estimate that is, the person that puts the encroachment is required to restore it to the condition that it was before. And part of the estimate is the city's determination as to what would the cost of repair to restore it.
And is there a time or a, is there a timeframe for an encroachment?
If it's the city manager, which is a minor encroachment, I think it's a year or up to three years. Council with each encroachment can determine the time of the encroachment.
Okay, so the deposit is based on the, like, complexity of the encroachment applied for?
Yes.
And so whether it's a sign that encroaches on city property or a patio or a, those are all, it's $219 plus whatever deposit?
Correct. For instance, when the island company put in the water system out in front of the Blue Water Grill, that was a substantial amount that they had to pay on deposit to cover if they had to actually remove those tanks. So that was one amount. And depending on what is done, what our practice is, the city practices, to talk to Public Works, to get Public Works to give us an estimate. And that's what's put in the permit.
So what rubric then are the outdoor dining agreements that the city has made? Is that an encroachment permit or some other?
Lease.
Those are leases?
So when we have the public hearings for these kinds of fees, does that mean the public has input about what they think is appropriate or not, or no?
Yes.
Okay, because I think those need to be looked at. All right, anyway.
Thank you. Debbie? Hello. You know I'm right. Actually, I had reversal of fortune today. For over a decade, I'm usually the only one here. And I thought the irony, and I was going to walk up and go, "Well, well, well. Timing is everything. Let's talk about raising the rates for sewer and saltwater." But I had reversal today. One of the lines I was going to use was, "I don't have to wait for a fire to remember that we're one neighborhood." And the way everybody felt this week, however you felt it, well, it changed me too. I ran on about a decade, I think, of thinking that any money for rescuing a bad system is wasted. And I disagree with myself today. You know, the amazing, the amazing factor that it's back on. Flushing's okay, you know? I'm very attached to running water, more so I realize today than I had. And at my house, on Tuesday, being without water, turned into Wednesday morning and a couple floods, you know? And I'm already paying for it because you know what? I'm older than the valves in our system. So, you know, the brown wore out on my hair. So things wear out. And I'm alive in here today. And the vibe in here, I was going to talk about I'm coming in appreciation for a change. And I kind of knew I didn't know the fee scale, but, ah, that makes sense. Am I coming back the 19th or what? But in any event, I bet in 10 years, when I look back, the fee raised this year will seem like pennies to me. Because most everything seems that way at this moment to me. You know, on April 15th, I've been here 40 years. Where'd that go? But you know what? I'm freaking lucky. And on Friday, when I went downtown, and actually when, you know, a plumber that I joke around with and Mike, you know, when I listen to everything here, there isn't any separation. You know, Mr. Greenlaw, he looks like an Islander. He's tired after emergency. He really looks like Wendy Day. And these are the things that bring some sort of something that strikes all of us. So I'm not here to bitch about the money. I swear to gosh, I don't want to see another dollar on my property tax bill, but you know. I mean, that's all relative, that's going to happen, you know? So I came here out of appreciation today, but I can feel it. I can already feel it, that everybody had the same deal. So in three weeks, when I'm used to running water again or whatever, whatever. You know, I'm so fortunate. It's like, you know, tenants, I'm going to raise your rent, you know it's coming. But, you know, because I usually don't, you know? But it was so gracious in our little emergency from Tuesday to Friday that my tenants are unbothered. You know, and I go, "What are we going to do?" Well, the worst thing we could do is go be in the ocean or dig a hole in the backyard. I don't know, but I'm not leaving, or you know? And nobody's leaving. And like, it put everything in the chopper perspective. I'm tired of rolling up here going, "Don't raise my rates." You know, because it doesn't make any sense. Because you just said the bill for the emergency hasn't come in yet. This could be cheap compared to that. What do I know? I don't even know what the figures are yet. It's probably going to be, I watched this whole thing working tonight. Like you here, Pam, you know? And you know Norris is my everything, you know? And he is always my date to a PUC hearing. It's so fabulous. But I appreciate it. I appreciate that we're all tired and stood up and, I mean, I'm glad it wasn't a fire. I mean, the way I see it, this is our latest spill. You know, and, you know, I want this and I want that. But today, I come in appreciation more so than I have before. You know, that's it. Shocked, you didn't like. And, oh, I do have a beef from last year's meeting, though. Well, this is a public hearing about rates. I know. And last year at the rate meeting, you said it would cost me about a 12-pack of beer. Denise, I drink Scotch.
That was on the sewer, salt and trash. These fees don't have anything to do with those.
I know, I'm playing. My point is, it's been too long since we had a drink. Thank you, Debbie. Okay, so are there no more comments? We will close.
No, we're not going to close. We're going to continue the public hearing until the 19th of June.
Great, thank you.
I need a motion for that.
Yes.
I need a motion to continue, so that's for a minute.
And there's, moved in second, further comments? Call for the vote? Okay.
All ayes.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm actually going to abstain from items number seven and eight due to a financial conflict of interest.
And I also, for number seven.
And due to the same conflict of interest in come from the island company versus interest from Mr. Dunn for Councilmember Cassidy for number eight. So number seven, first.
I'm going to have Amanda come up and present this item, please.
Okay, so this item is an encroachment permit application from the island company. This is for the Atwater building. This is part of the renovation that they're doing at the Atwater. The encroachment permit is to improve the public street from the alley next to the trade winds all the way to the parking lot next to the Atwater. They are creating three entryways into the Atwater building. One for the restaurant, one for the lobby, and the other one, I think, is on the other side of the lobby. Oh, excuse me, the entry into the arcade. You should have this drawing. I don't think it was in your original packet, but this is what the street states proposed to you?
Where was that put in my box?
It was laying on the counter in front of your chair when you got in tonight.
I have an extra because I came in and got it today, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I think Devin gave you one when you were here this afternoon, Annie.
Yes, I passed that on somebody else.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
So we're, the encroachments, as they're requested, meet all of the requirements, the findings that you're supposed to make to grant an encroachment, in that they, it's the applicant, it's necessary, desirable to them to create this streetscape in front of their property. It does not negatively impact the adjacent property owners, and it doesn't negatively impact the public.
I'm sorry, Amanda, did you say it's necessary and desirable to them?
That's, the question is.
Or as determined by the city council?
The question is, the encroachment use is necessary or desirable, it doesn't say by who.
Okay.
So I think, it's certainly desirable by them. I think ultimately, it's going to be your decision, what extent you want them to brand the street as part of the Atwater, I don't wanna use the word design, but as part of the Atwater improvements, and there is a condition to the encroachment permit, that the city gets to sign off on the type of materials and things that will be added out to the public street.
And I think the proposal then is that that would be Mr. Greenlaw?
Yes, ma'am. So I think the question for you is, if you want to allow the encroachments, the canopy in front of the Atwater lobby entrance will cover the artistic tiles that they would be making on the public sidewalk, and the canopy extends from the front of the building out to the curb. So this will be one of the, probably the first few canopies we have, or awnings, that extends the full width of the sidewalk. I think the Glenmore is probably the only other one that's similar, and their entryway is actually off on their property, but it goes out to the, oop, sorry, they have an awning at their front door.
Yeah, that's, there's about, for the, where their posts are, we looked at that, and that's about a two foot from the, from the roadway.
Right.
Except that.
And how wide would you say that that awning space of the Glenmore would?
The Glenmore is, maybe twelve?
That's what, yeah, and I, I walked it off, but I, I didn't measure it. About twelve feet.
Do we have questions of the island company? We have representatives in the office?
Yes, Chris and Louise are both here.
What's that?
Chris and Louise are both here, if you have questions for them.
And then to complete the staff report, we did talk with Mr. Greenlaw about the cost estimate, if we had to take it down, and he came up with the twenty-five thousand dollar figure. So they have to post a bond for twenty, a bond or cash for twenty-five thousand.
Where, does it take up their tiles as well?
That's his estimate as to the total cost, if the city had to do it itself.
Okay, but the branding, the branding on the, 'cause the encroachment isn't the tiles, the, the encroachment is the.
No, it's include, that includes the tile.
Includes the tile, okay.
And the only question I had about that is, did, did we have a chance to talk to Parsac, whether they had any concerns in terms of slippering the tile?
I have not spoken to Parsac.
Yeah, but we did require, there is an insurance requirement, so, maybe that would cut.
Well, regardless of an insurance requirement, I don't know that I'd wanna approve something that we later find presents a problem.
And that would depend on probably the materials they're using, huh?
Well, the materials for the tiles have to be approved by the city, so we could make certain that Parsac approves.
That there's some coefficient, yeah.
Correct.
And then I think Pam touched on, excuse me, that they also are required to list the city as additional insurance.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so I can start with some question, or council member?
I, I just have observations, I don't have any questions.
Okay, okay. So, Chris, you would like to step forward? And I just maybe have comments and kind of questions, both or whatever. And Amanda probably, probably should stay close. Okay, so one of the things, so.
Chris Wilhelm, Catalina Island Company.
Oh, hi, Chris.
Good evening.
So, with regards to signage, with the way this structure is, and this is a question for Amanda as well, Hotel Atwater, Hotel Atwater, Hotel Atwater, and I don't know what you're doing with the Hotel Atwater sign on the side of the building, which I personally love, the old one, but, so they're gonna be coming with, I mean, how do we, that seems like a lot of signage, so how does that fit within our sign ordinance?
So I think the idea was, and Louise, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the idea was that we were staying within the eight square feet on the lettering on the canopy, and then the, we weren't planning on doing anything but sort of touching up or repainting that existing sort of graphic sign on the side of the building and leaving that one alone.
So, but the facade, the front of the canopy is how many feet, eighteen feet?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight feet?
Right, it spans from, yeah, one side of the window, the other.
So twenty-eight feet, that looks like, so there's eighteen feet right there of signage on the first Hotel Atwater sign?
Well, we were assuming that it's being sort of calculated based on, they're, they're pin letters, so as opposed to sort of a full-blown sign, and the way that's been calculated in the past was, you took the square footage of the actual cutout letter element, and I think when you add all of that up, it was within the eight-foot tolerance.
Okay.
That was the intention.
Amanda, and you're in agreement with that? Let me check.
Are we talking about the sidewalk or the awning, first of all?
Awning.
The awning, okay. So, the, the signage will be the height and the length of the word, word, not an inch A and an inch B and inch C. Maybe I misunderstood how you described it.
No, I don't see the clarification.
So, the regular square footage measurement that we do for everything?
Right, so if you got a six inches tall letters.
From the beginning of the letter to the last, the end of the last letter?
Right.
And the, the top to the bottom? Or as Giuliani would say, the bottom to the top?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So there would be an issue going forward, or a request for a variance going forward, if you, if you stuck with it?
Right, and that would be under a separate sign application. Your, the encroachment is for the canopy and the other materials that they're proposing to be on the public street in the city space, the sign would be a separate permit. I will just point out, one of the issues that's come up, the reason that we're bringing the sign ordinance back, is we, they are, have asked, and one of the earlier ones was, could these line, the letters be internally lit?
Oh, right.
And they wouldn't be able to under our sign ordinance, because there's a residence on top of the jails.
Oh, right.
So, or there's a resident unit across the street, so that impacts that illumination restrictions. And so that's one of the things we're thinking about, coming back when we put in the three hundred feet for illumination, maybe that's more than what we had expected, or, anyway.
So we would take that up as a separate?
But that's a separate sign permit, yes.
Right, and this is kind of awkward, because technically, isn't it the planning commission that will approve the sign?
Yes, so this is not.
So I apologize.
Okay.
Right, you're, you're assuming it's a blank slate right now, I think the sign is just there for.
A rendering.
Yes, you're not approving this.
A rendering.
But, but your reading, and the city attorney's reading, is that the, the sidewalk improvement with the name also constitutes a sign?
Yes.
Okay.
At least that, that's what I.
That makes sense to me?
Yes.
Yeah, and while you're thinking, if I could kind of stick, so, Mr. Wilhelm, so we've got one, two, three, four, five, six plant, I mean, I'm sorry, benches, and how many are out there now that are city benches?
Three.
Three.
Three, all right, and, and what was the reasoning or thinking behind adding so many?
Just trying to create sort of a rhythm that made sense, giving the breadth or the length of that building on the street.
Are you anticipating that you're gonna have overflow crowds from your Tavis Bar?
No, it was convenience to the public, really, it was just trading some street furniture to make it all kind of look a little more homogenous than it has in the past. We're open to obviously feedback on that.
And my little concern is, is vehicles with doors, I mean, there's a lot of, so you, you know, you drive up and there's a, there's a bench, and there's a bench, and then it also, the width of the benches you were thinking about were, what was the width of those benches? These, these?
Presented on the plan. The, oh, the width along the sidewalk?
Well, the length and the width, I guess.
So probably, they're probably five to six foot long.
And are they wider, or the same width as what's there now?
As a bench?
They're not fully designed, but they're probably thirty-two, thirty-two inch wide.
Thirteen?
Yeah, we have dimensions on everything except the benches. Seems, we've got dimensions on planter pots.
Yeah, you're right, there's no dimension on the bench.
Yeah, 'cause they do look.
It looks like it's a little wider than.
They look, they look wider.
Yeah, and again, really there for just kind of a rendering purpose, the specific of the design, we'd expect to sort of work with the city on that.
So, I'm, Mr. Greenlaw ultimately be signing off on all these features, and so these may not be what's going to be put in.
As proposed.
As proposed, right, so it might not be this square planter, or that bench, or that specific design.
And, remind me again, in terms of what's on the ground, you'll just go continue with the regular sidewalk, you're not gonna beautify the whole thing from the alley to the?
There'd be some sort of minor probably repair work, just to clean up the rest of the gray sidewalk.
Right.
The only area we're proposing anything different than typical sidewalk is in that rectangle.
Okay.
And, and then in front of the Atwater, too, we don't have tile work there now.
Right. Oh, I'm sorry, in front of the arcade.
And the tile work in front of the?
Yeah, so there's three spaces sort of identified, correct, where we put some enhancement to the, to the ground plan.
Unless I'm not seeing correctly, in this one, you have two posts, and in this, this one, it looks more like four posts. I don't know what those little boxes are down there, I just assumed they were posts.
So it is, it is four, so there'd be two right at the building, right at the front of the building, just right off of the building facade, and then there would be two out at the edge of the sidewalk. Needs all four structural supports.
So these, no, there's two things right here, I didn't know what these were, those planters?
Those are structural supports.
So you'll have one, two?
So that column will be kind of integrated into the side of the building, you won't read it as a freestanding column, per se, but it is independent of the building facade structure.
There's not four posts that are gonna be at the end of the sidewalk?
No, 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 just two.
Just two, okay.
Two, and then two at the, adjacent to the building, the front.
Like the Glenmore has there.
Kind of integrated with the building, it's not separate.
Okay, and then what are, what are the dark spaces on the side?
On the side?
Is this just, I don't know what this is. You have a dark, you have dark right here, and really dark right there, what is that?
So, Annie, I, I, you know, that's actually a good question, so the squares, actually, I wouldn't, are those supposed to be those white planters, or are they trash receptacles? In the same area, outside the front door, that's a good question.
I'm sorry, so, so I say that here?
There are four squares, if you look at where the front door to the lobby is, there's four squares across that are pretty evenly spaced, are those the, what's pictured, or called internal sidewalk?
Yeah.
Planters, is, is that what you're envisioning, planters?
I think that's an echo, I'm sorry, from a previous drawing, and there should be nothing there. If you look at the actual technical plan view, there's nothing in front of there, so you can cross those out.
And again, the blacks, the black spaces?
The black spaces.
Oh, those dots?
No.
The dashes, I mean, the dashes?
This drawing created more problems than it needed to.
Oh, good. This and this, what is that?
I think it's a shadow.
Well, make sure it's a shadow, please.
That's a, out against the curb line?
And on the side of the building, and the side of what?
Right here, and that gray there.
Nothing.
Okay.
It's not an exception.
It's a shadow off of the AutoCAD, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. And at some point down the line, this is, this probably isn't a fair question, are you gonna be looking for load, it says right now, no loading and unloading, but is that obviously going to be requested at some point down the line?
It's not our current plan to do that.
How are you gonna drop off, when you, you're just gonna, those kids are gonna push the luggage like they do from, from the pavilion to the Atwater?
We have no plan right now to create a separate drop-off there.
Okay.
So where would the drop-off be? Just if there's space?
Handle, kind of the same way, the same way it's done.
If there's space, the parking driver will get lucky, otherwise they'll.
Double park.
Double park.
Yeah.
I guess they could pull into the parking lot.
Well, and then there is the Glenmore Plaza, they're loading and unloading, that's not their zone only, right?
It's not supposed to be?
No.
Right, so you, that would be, okay, okay.
They'll, operationally, they'll work through that.
Okay.
They managed it today, so.
And, so the trash cans that you're, something like you're creating here, are we, do we assume responsibility for those, or is that something that they would do?
For emptying me?
Yeah.
We were trying to be.
You're gonna get everybody's garbage.
We were trying to be compatible with sort of whatever was happening, sort of citywide, and just trying to create some, again, consistency with what that looked like, and rather than just let sort of unattractive trash cans, or no trash cans, be out there, we wanted to try to be a little more intentional about it.
Well, we definitely, 'cause we've got two or three, we've got at least two there, so, and I guess, go ahead, Amanda.
I, I just wanna clarify, I think in the permit language, it says that the companies required to maintain everything they put out on the sidewalk. So if they put benches, trash cans, planters, they're required to maintain them.
Wow, we got a couple more streets we wanna give them. Okay, and no request for outdoor dining when the new restaurant comes in, right? We're good?
No.
We're good?
All right, okay.
Yeah, I, I trust Mr. Greenlaw's decision, it seems like a lot of benches to me, I don't want the people in vehicles to feel, you know, kind of restricted or, or whatever, and, because you're gonna have people parking right in front of your hotel, you know, and with really an access issue in a way.
Well, I know that my right-hand drive truck, I'm not gonna be able to get out, unless I'm lucky enough to land in the, you know, I'm guessing it's like four feet between each bench?
Yeah, so let's leave that up to Bob, I think if, if he says.
Well, you're speaking for yourself right now.
Oh, okay, but, oh, yeah, but I'm just, yeah, I, I think it might be too much, but.
If there's too much out there, we're certainly open to any kind of redirection on quantity or placement of some of these elements.
And the number of those little planters.
Sure.
You know, I mean, there're gonna be cigarette butt receptacles, is what those are gonna turn into sadly, and everything else, so I, I don't know, it just, not to clutter so much, we don't have that much sidewalk anyway, so I, wanting to.
Sure, understand.
Okay.
And Amanda.
Amanda, you win. I'm sorry, I was just going to suggest that since the benches and the planters and the trash cans are up to the decision of Mr. Greenlaw.
According to the proposal.
According to the proposal, if you approve it in that way, if you want to have us come back with what Mr. Greenlaw has agreed to.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Then you would know how many benches there are, how many planters, how many, you would have probably a clearer idea. I don't, in speaking to Mr. Greenlaw, and I don't wanna speak for him, 'cause he's not here, but in our conversations about this, I don't think he had any issues with the decorative tile, as long as it wasn't something that was going to be, you know, slip resistant and safe for the public, but I think the ultimate other things that we'll be placing on the sidewalk, he was gonna sign off on those. So if you, if it makes it easier to assess what the ultimate encroachment is going to be, after Mr. Greenlaw makes his decisions, then perhaps we should bring it back.
I'm, I'm gonna say my piece now. Please. I think this is a beautiful design for some other city. It's not Avalon, it's monolithic, it's sterile, in a nice way. I mean, sometimes modern and sterile is great, but that's not how I see our town, and I'm not sure that that's the direction that I wanna see our town moving in. So to me, it's really up to the city council to make these decisions. I don't think Mr. Greenlaw, with all due respect, who is great at fixing sewer pipes, and, you know, overseeing those kinds of things, I don't know that he has an aesthetic view, that I think the responsibility rests with the city council to make these decisions and not pass them along to somebody else, and hope that their vision is gonna comport with what ours is. and not pass them along to somebody else and hope that their vision is going to comport with what ours is. And I know I'm being very strong and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. And I think, but I think there's some mix of these things that will work with what you're trying to achieve but will also still not be as same. It's, everything's so same for an entire block. And that's really not what Avalon is. You have differences and that's what makes it interesting. So that's just my sense of this.
Still, let me ask you a question, Councilwoman. So...
So there are aspects of this I would say I love. All the greenery, the more greenery we can get, I think that's fantastic. I think window boxes are an excellent idea. I'd love to see flowers that change with the seasons and the color. That would help with what you're doing here. I think the size of the tile installation at the front is a little grandiose. It's a little too much. But the other smaller ones, I think, are to scale and fit. So maybe there's a way to reduce it down. And then I am concerned about, about the number of benches and how close they are to the street. I think it's going to cause problems for you and for people who are trying to park. So that would just be my, my general observations.
So, okay, the canopy itself to me is kind of the biggest deal.
And that, yeah. And the big canopy all the way up to the sidewalk, thank you.
Yeah, so, I mean, I went in front of Lloyd's today and they have, they have something that's, you know, theirs is very modern looking but only sticks out, I don't know, five feet.
It's about five feet.
Yeah, and this is sticking out all the way, what, 12 feet or whatever. Is there any way to make it so that it isn't so big?
So structurally, the answer was no. We've looked at sort of a canopy approach off of that building and structurally it can't carry that load. And so unfortunately, we'd have to come out and put posts six feet or eight feet out in the middle of the sidewalk now, which made no sense. And so we just sort of took a chapter from the Glenmore across the street from us and said, well, okay, let's just carry it all the way out to the edge. We looked at theirs and said, that looks okay. It looks like it fit the scale of the building. We felt like this fit the scale of this building. It's a block-wide building. It's three stories tall.
But what you've done is you've created a facade that makes it appear as if from the alley to your parking lot is all one building. And so of necessity, in order to achieve this very symmetrical look that's being designed here, you end up with the 18, I'm sorry, the 28-foot wide canopy. Which is, which is really, that's larger than anything you would find in town.
Right.
28 feet.
Understood. Again, we believe, and we wouldn't have submitted it. We believe it's in scale with the building. We fully respect opinions that are different and so understand that.
But it's, it's not in scale to the hotel. It's in scale to the building. To the building, which is also a restaurant. It's not just the Avalon Hotel. There's the restaurant and there's the...
When you look at that building...
Yeah, but it is a whole building.
You don't see the hotel and the restaurant space as separate, independent spaces. You really read it as one mass. And so you're right, we did scale that canopy to that mass that you read with your eye.
Right, right.
But as I look at the rendering, it looks like you are doing, for the two stores that are on the other side of the arcade, you're making them appear as the hotel does. It's a same look all the way across, correct? Isn't that what this is?
They'll have, and we have...
So the windows are going to be painted the same color, the, everything's going to be the same. And are you taking any of the tile off at the end of the building?
Yeah, we're going to replace, pull all of that tile off. We'll have a tile expert come out and pull that tile off. And then we're looking at ways to reapply that tile somewhere into the project or on another project.
And I'm just going to say, because tile, I've heard that, we've heard that before, and then the tile never comes back, so I would...
I take exception with that, Mr. Albers. I personally worked on the spa project where we pulled tile off.
The spa, okay, I take it back.
And we put tile right back on.
You were able to do it.
Just need to clarify that.
And I'm not saying that you would necessarily be able to do that here, but I'd prefer to know that before we approve this as opposed to after. I mean, that the expert, that the expert comes out and looks at it and that there's some commitment, yes, we're going to be able to do it, or no, we're not. I mean, I would think with your experience of removing it from the front of the building.
Right.
And I don't know what happened with that tile. But that you would have some idea about what's, what's going to happen with the tile here.
So you're saying that there's a nexus between the encroachment permit and what we're going to do with the tile on the facade?
Yeah. I mean, because you're, what you're trying to do is achieve a continuous look, correct? Which involves the removal of the tile.
We're trying to clean up the look of that whole block. Which really doesn't look great right now.
Right, okay. And so I'm just trying to understand what the, what the overall look is going to be in, given what you're planning to do. So if you're planning to remove that tile.
Right.
And then not, if you're not able to replace it, we're just going to have the same look from the alley to the parking lot?
We think there's an articulated look to the building that's architecturally appropriate and we're very proud of. And we do, we are passionate about that.
No, I agree with you, preserving the integrity of the architecture. But to me, the tile is part of that.
We're passionate about that tile. Always have been. That tile, any, any historic element of any building, we're always very, very careful with what happens to it. And we make very careful plans about how to reintegrate it. And we're committed as a company to taking great pains, to finding ways to hang on to that history and to reinstall it and save it wherever possible.
Because I honestly would love a proposal that rather than more black and white, if you couldn't save those tiles, that you had a mosaic done with those tiles. That did the, the atwater or, you know, the sidewalk things. That to me would enhance the feeling of history and culture and honor those tiles.
Absolutely our intent. We've been, we've been working hard trying to figure out exactly where to do it.
That's not the plan. So I'm just saying that if we all put our heads together, maybe we can achieve something even better.
And to be honest, I'm not sure that the exterior of the building ultimately will be the place for it. It may be inside the building in the lobby somewhere. It may be somewhere else in the building. It may be on a different building. Originally, that tile was not there when the building was built. It was added later after construction. Granted, it's become an iconic sort of element to that building, regardless of when it was installed, and I fully acknowledge that. So again, it's not part of this specific proposal. We are 100% committed to figuring out how to reintegrate it into the design.
And I guess I'm just going to be honest and say, if you said to me, I'm going to take that tile and I'm going to put it in this big sidewalk thing that I'm proposing, I would be more inclined to vote for it. And if you're not, then I'm not.
My, so my only caveat would be, I'm not sure that the wall tile would be an appropriate surface.
Well, I know that you guys have lots of it, so...
Or the ground tile.
I'm just suggesting that that might be a very interesting thing. If we end up saying, let's, let's take another fresh look at this, go back and look at how many benches do you really want? And how are they going to interact with the opening of the car doors and so forth? That maybe that might be something that you like as an idea.
So with, so with the commitment of our figuring out a way that the city and the company sort of agree how to reinstall that tile back into this project on the exterior of this project somewhere that's appropriate. You can build benches out of these things. You can do lots of creative things with this tile. If we committed to that tonight, would that be something you could support?
Well, I'm still concerned about leaving to Mr. Greenlaw certain design issues.
And we'd be fine with, if you wanted to table the idea of approving tonight the encroachments of the planters and the benches until a plan that's worked out with staff and then brought back to you. If that would be more appropriate, we'd be happy with that.
What is it that you really need approval for then?
So it's the canopy and the tile and the pavement. If we get through that tonight, then I think we could come back with a more detailed plan on some of the other elements that I've heard some concerns about tonight.
Do you want to make any comments?
I was just going to say that I happen to like the planter boxes because they're there, or some were there. And I, running that building for many years, I can appreciate the concept of the fact it is one building, because it is one building. Al it alley, built in 1921. You know, the cohesive look, I don't have any big problem with that. The scale of the canopy, I mean, it looks impressive. You know, can you knock it down two feet, maybe? I don't know. The benches, I'm not sure about. I don't know how much your door opens or something. Those are valid points. So I'm, it's, I think the tile work, the entrance work is interesting. I think it's going to be a pain to keep it clean.
That's our job.
Yeah, that's your job. But, you know, I like the fact that they're spending big bucks on the atwater and they're going to try to clean up the street, personally.
And so you're, why just, why did I just notice this? So you're changing, you're changing the facade eventually all the way to the alley?
Trying to clean up the entire look of that, right. And again, we believe that from alley to parking lot, we've created a nice sort of picture or a nice elevation of that entire facade. And it is articulated. There are some differing colors in there. There are some changes of elevation in there that we're trying to accentuate in the window treatments. And so trying to make it less sort of monolithic, I think was your word. It kind of reads a little monolithic now. And so we're trying to articulate it a little bit with color and with some of the design work.
Yeah, because there's a, there's a bird tile right here by the alley, huh?
It's the Catalina Crafters side.
Yeah.
The far right side of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is quite lovely. Council, what's your pleasure? With, based on what Mr. Wilhelm said about the canopy, you made some comment about the canopy in two feet. I don't know what you meant by that, if you were talking two feet like this.
You know, someone's really concerned about the massiveness of it. I mean, I think, kind of, you know, it doesn't have to be that big, but I don't have a problem with it that big.
It lines up now.
I didn't follow, I guess, I didn't understand from just a construction point your statement that, that by necessity it had to be the 28 feet?
No.
Oh, how far it came out, if it was 28. If it's 28 feet wide, it has to come out?
It needs to come out the 13 feet or so. Otherwise it lands in the middle of the sidewalk.
Conversely, if it's not 28 feet, then you have more leeway in terms of how far it comes out.
You really don't. Because you'd have, you'd put columns in the middle of the sidewalk to support it. And that didn't seem right to us. That would be blocking...
No, I don't mean the middle, but, but pulled back sort of where the Glenmore...
I think anything you put out in there is going to obstruct traffic moving through that sidewalk. So we, that was the reason we pulled it all the way out. Was to try to clear that sidewalk as much as possible.
Yeah, I agree. When we looked at that today, that seemed to be the case.
That makes sense.
My understanding from Chris's comments is that the canopy can't be shorter from the curb because the building can't support the weight of it just being...
It can't be cantilevered.
It can't be cantilevered out. It's got to, it has to sit on a post if they want, if they want to put that kind of canopy on the building. Annie's mentioned the one that Lloyd's has, but I don't know how it's attached to that building.
Yeah.
And I don't know what type of weight structure would be required within the atwater building while it's being renovated that would support that size canopy. And it may just be so big that you just can't.
That, that structure was built in 1920. It wasn't built to handle really any kind of load that extends off of it. It just wasn't set up that way originally. So again, we think that the building of that scale needed a little bit of an announcement that that was the entry. And so once we looked at sort of the width of the building and where the structural bays in that building were because of the window sizes, it was kind of either really, really narrow that looked silly or it had to jump out to the 28 feet. There wasn't kind of an inner, inner place to, intermediate place to sort of put those posts without them landing right in the middle of a window that you'd then be sort of looking through from the other side. And so we couldn't move it in just two feet. Theory, we could, although then the posts would be sitting right in the middle of a window.
But it's not really a canopy. I mean, this is an entire structure.
Well, it's a canopy in the sense that that's the function that it's serving?
The function of it. But in terms of architectural description, I would not call this a canopy. I would call it a porcher or a, I mean, it's, it's a covered porch essentially.
Okay, again, it's intended to sort of serve both the look and the function of a canopy or an extended canopy to sort of cover the entry of the hotel. Typical to a lot of hotels of that scale. And we studied a lot of hotels and scale and what was too big and what was too small. This is what we've come up with. Again, we were happy with it, we're proud of it. I appreciate all the comments. Trying to respond to them. We're happy to clean up the furniture piece of it, take that off the list for now and work with staff on that. Happy to have a condition about, you know, the tiles being reintegrated into the facade in some way or into the street front in some way. And to work with staff on exactly how to do that and where to do that.
And just once again, on something as easy, as the size of Lloyd's, as it goes, it's pretty wide, it's pretty wide.
It's wide, right.
But it's, I mean, and you're saying that nothing like that would be appropriate on your building?
That eyebrow that extends off of their building like that, that atwater facade wouldn't carry, that structural engineers looked at it and they've told us it wouldn't carry.
All right. Comment from the public?
Is this a lobby?
You need to call up, please.
It is. It's a handsome structure as rendered by the pictures if it's in New York City. My question is, is there going to be a doorman? I mean, that's what it looks like. It looks like New York City. And that's my fear for Avalon. We have, it's like, there's this kind of lack of respect for what has been. And I, I, you know, I have to agree, you know, we see the tile go like the tile that was around the door of the arcade that everybody forgets. It's gone now. Where did the Indian head tiles go that were in the entry of the spa? Yes, some of the bird tiles came back. But I still, we just keep losing that look that other towns have had the wisdom to preserve, that lend interest to a town. If we all start looking like a strip mall, if everything we have here is, you know, like, just like this panoply of stuff that has no wisdom and integrity or style, that's what makes me crazy. It, it doesn't look like Avalon. It looks like New York City. And I, I look at that and I think to myself, are they going to have a doorman? Is there somebody going to be there to open the door for us when we go? I mean, I don't know, it just doesn't fit here. And I think it's too big and I, I don't think it's a canopy. I think it's a, a part of the building and it's a big part, a big building part. Anyway, I don't, I would say if we could do it, that it has, like the rest of the canopies, I think those are nice that come out over the windows. And you could do a larger one. And you could make a stylish rendering across the front of it that announces the atwater. And I like the idea of tile on the ground. I think that's all lovely. But that thing that comes out of the door is, is too much. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
So the idea from this has been taken from the Glenmore? Has that opened sort of the floodgates of these awnings that I think are encroachments, yet they seem permanent? And is there, is there not a time limit to an encroachment?
Who can, who can speak to that better? You mentioned it.
The city council sets the time limit and it grants the encroachment.
So it could be five years, it could be forever?
It could be forever until, I think the current condition is, it is, it lasts forever unless, until the council takes an action to formally rescind the encroachment.
Okay, so I'm just thinking off the cuff here, but if they really want this structure, maybe they would negotiate a trade for the easement at the gas dock. Just a thought.
Touche.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to ask the applicant to bring this back at the next meeting and incorporate some of the suggestions that have been made this evening.
Pam, I think there's someone else who...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I looked right at you and I didn't register.
I just wanted to possibly unfortunately be a voice of opposition. Avalon doesn't currently have a review board for facades or design. It's something we talked about when they redesigned the pavilion and Jerry Dunn's shop. And it wasn't done then. And it's, that was like three years ago, two and a half, three years ago.[1779.16] So with regards to the encroachment permit, the city I think is in full force to be able to choose how they want to choose and decide on that topic. Personally, I think that it is large for the area because we're not used to it. I don't even notice when I walk under the Glenmore's covering, I don't know if anyone else does. When it wasn't there, it was actually weird, and it was very sunny on that side of the street. And there was no cover for the rain when it happened, when they were working on it for a couple weeks in a row. I don't know that it's necessarily a bad thing to have a canopy like that. I'm a little worried about the tile, I think, yes, it's gonna be hard to maintain, and also it, almost any tile I've ever seen has been a slip hazard. So perhaps something different in texture, like a different colored cement or something stylized like that would make more sense for the area and be easier to maintain, possibly. But we don't really have, unfortunately, a review board that says that we're allowed to tell them what they can and can't do with the facade. I do appreciate that it looks like the rendering maintains the same original window style that was in the building, which is cool. I think that looks really good. I hate that it's all one color, it makes the whole block look the same. I agree that they're probably gonna put in extremely beautiful installations of plants that will be maintained wonderfully, because that's what we've seen across many of their properties that are public facing, which is great. I think people are often looking for seating on that street, waiting for people to come out of different locations. You are absolutely right, I think you will see a lot of people using the flower boxes as ashtrays unfortunately, so possibly having some of those pre-placed would be great. But I think overall, it does make that block look better than it looks right now. That's not saying much, because they manage the block right now, that's their responsibility. So, you know, way to make it look bad so you can make it look good. It seems to be the way that things go in town pretty often with this. But to say that it's, it's a nice design, it looks beautiful, you guys did a nice design. It follows the architectural design of the top of the building, like, there's a lot of things I like about it. And it provides a service to their customers to wait in the shade or wait in the rain, if there's ever rain hopefully. So that's my two cents on that, so.
Thank you for your comments, yeah.
I would like to just say that when we built the casino...